We'll now call to order the special meeting of the Clay County School Board for October 19th, 2017. Mr. Davis, would you like to do an indication for us?
Yes, ma'am, again. Please bow your head. They have been involved, Father Lord, Lord, thank you for being with us today, thank you for being with us for the school system, and hopefully we make the decisions to act in the best interest of Clay County School District along with our kids and the greater good for our community, Lord. Thank you for being us, allowing us yesterday to come together and really talk about strategies as we move forward as a team. I appreciate everything that you've done for us and our families and keep us safe. Thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Whoops, I think I got that out of order, we were supposed to do that first and then called it ordered. I'll now call to order the Clay County School Board Special Meeting of October 19th, 2017. We have no citizens here, but we welcome them anyway if they'd like to come, and anybody who does come and would like to fill out a three-minute card and speak, we would allow you to speak, hand them in, and to be on the meeting, you can, your participation is welcome and appreciated. So we have two items on our agenda today. The first one is the addendum to appoint, the appointment of Clay County School Board, CCA, and SFSBA bargaining teams for the 2017-2018 school year. I'll entertain a motion.
Salute?
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Polo, second by Ms. Condon, any discussion?
Let me ask you something. I just have a legal question. If, I want y'all to be involved, I want you at the executive sessions, but let me ask you this, if we put you officially on the bargaining team, then if someone wanted to talk to you or you, you know, who might have influence on the teachers, would that, would that prevent them being able to talk to y'all to try to?
So bargaining agents should not?
Well, I mean, if it's not someone on the bargaining team, but someone who's very influential of the teachers, I was thinking about this coming down the road, and I thought sometimes a little eyeball-to-eyeball contact kind of helps smooth things down a little bit, and, and I think the statutes say that you and you can come to the bargaining sessions anyway, and I'm just wondering if that would prevent some, you know, if someone had some questions of her or you, if it would prevent, because it's my understanding that the bargaining team individually can't get out and talk to you or you, I mean, they don't come, if they're on the bargaining team, they don't come and talk to him about stuff or Susan about stuff, and I'm just, that's just a question, I was thinking about, I don't want us to cut off our nose just by our face, I want y'all in the bargaining sessions, and I think it's important for you to have the money and you.
Right.
Because you, you know what's going on. But that's just a question I had, do y'all, do you understand what I'm?
I understand what you're asking, but I thought that you had said that according to statute that we couldn't allow them to be in there.
That is what it says in the statute, but the way I read it, and that's why Mr. Daggett has come up with a different memorandum.
She wasn't allowing them the last time.
And I did call out to FSBA about it, and I asked, and she said that they, they don't recognize this ex officio term, and that.
So my understanding, we're eliminating that.
Andrea recommended just adding you and Susan to the actual team, and she said that's how a lot of districts just do it, you're part of the team, and.
I understand where you're coming from, though, because Randall Lee feels open to move both of you.
Because it's my understanding, and I've checked with other attorneys too, just to confirm what Dr. Mr. Daggett said, and they're going to be allowed in the bargaining sessions anyway, and I wonder, are we cutting off our nose just by our face to cut off any communication between Susan and, and?
So, so let me.
I mean, I just, I just asked.
Oh, so you're talking about the communication between them, between outsiders and that of the one who may have their influence over the teachers.
I think, though, I agree with you from that standpoint, however, they are to represent us, this is our bargaining team for the, the school board district, the school board bargaining team, and they can't communicate with us, which is the most important, to know what we want on our behalf unless they're on that list.
What?
So, so they, that bargaining team, so, so we.
But they're in executive session.
They can't be in executive session.
Yeah, they can't.
There are two questions that I, I think, what we're talking about, we're talking a little bit about executive session, then we're talking about negotiations. So, collective bargaining negotiations are public, okay? The public can attend. It is really up to the agencies whether the public can ask questions back and forth and make presentations, usually that's not welcomed at collective bargaining sessions. With respect to executive sessions, those are closed, they're private, and they, you know, historically here, you've all had committees that have been brought to you by the administration, and this board has a firm closed committee. It is the committee and the superintendent or representative that may attend that executive session, no one else.
Statute doesn't say committee, statute says superintendent or representative. It's very clear, it's the superintendent or representative and the five board members in the statute, and this is where we disagree, I don't agree that you're saying his whole committee can come in to executive session, they can't, this committee is just, there are representatives who are bargaining on our behalf, the head negotiator is the representative who comes to executive session. We can't have the whole committee, there is a difference, we're approving them to bargain on our behalf, but statute is very clear who can and cannot come in executive session, and it says superintendent or representative.
But, Ms. Davis, I thought the whole reason that we brought this today was because, my understanding at our last executive session was that, or before our last executive session, was that if Dr. Legutco was on this list, you were comfortable with her being.
And that's, that's correct, that's correct, because she is the CFO of our district, she's in charge of the finances, she would be the representative for that, but that doesn't mean that the rest of the list, according to statute.
She hasn't had a pay for the bargaining team.
And, and so I, I read it as.
That's very different.
So, my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, is the fact that we agreed to place myself and get the pseudo-whatever I was.
That's such a.
I remember talking yesterday.
I have no.
Fazay, yeah, made a listener. So placing me and Dr. Legutco on there, and then my understanding is that the statute allowed me to bring any person I believe to bring value to the conversation, if they're on the team, but not the entire team.
What exactly does the statute say about?
The statute does say, and I'm just going to look at it again, the statute, if I recall correctly, it was in my memo, I just finalized it yesterday, I wish I could bring it. But it does say, the.
Yeah, I would prefer that if you'd read it to us from now.
I don't mean to create a scandal, but I was just looking at it, I was driving down here, and I thought.
So, thank you. Yeah, I'll just go ahead and read it, Title 447-605, subsection one, "All discussions between the CEO of the public employer or his or her representative in the legislative body or the public employer relative to collective bargaining," that being you, "shall be closed and exempt from 286-11," Sunshine. So, the interpretation of this has been very, very clear by the Attorney General's office, by district courts of appeal.
Could you read that one more time? Because somewhere in there, and it might be in the separate section that you have shared with us, it actually says something about actively participating or actively involved in, could you read that again?
Yeah, and that language comes from interpretation of this. So, "All discussions between the CEO of the public employer or his or her representative and the legislative body or the public employer relative to collective bargaining," that's that, "shall be closed and exempt from the prisms of 286-011." So, and I called FSBA as well, and I'm very comfortable in my interpretation of the law, and I provided a final opinion yesterday to y'all, and that is, you in an executive session, the body, the school board, may meet with the CEO, superintendent, and the committee, okay? Really, the law allows the CEO of a public agency, whether it's a school district or some other secretary agency, allows the CEO to cobble together with that committee and bring with him who he wants, so long as they're on our side, that is, they are a true representative or employee of our public employer. So here, you've had a history of the superintendent bringing to you the names of committee members, and the board has historically chimed in on them, nothing wrong with that. So that's where we were last time, and I believe we were at the point where we were going to list by name as, as, as members rather than just ex officio, Dr. Legutco and the superintendent himself.
So, we all agree with that, with what you're saying, based on that, Mrs. Daggett's question is, can the president of one of our unions or the representative of the unions speak with, who are not on the bargaining team, speak with the superintendent or Dr. Legutco, once they're actually labeled to the team? They're not on the bargaining team, but they do represent the CEO of that.
But if we put these two on the bargaining team, my question is, is can they then sit and talk about things?
Yeah, what they can do, okay, here, here's what they can't do, they can't be a conduit, whether it's the president of the union or someone else, they can't be a conduit of their bargaining committee, they can't act like a de facto bargaining agent.
I'm not talking about being a conduit, I'm talking about just to sit down and talk about it general, you know, you know.
There, there's nothing wrong with that.
That they, you know.
As long as we have a conversation about factual information.
Right.
Sure, and you know.
And that's what I was wondering, is would they be permitted to sit down and talk to them if they are officially on the bargaining team?
You just changed it, because before you, if they're officially on the bargaining.
If these two are officially on the bargaining. And I just, I just, you know, it's just came to me as I was driving down the road, is when I got it, hmm, are we doing what we should be doing, and I'm just opening it up for conversation, that y'all may just think I'm.
No, I understand.
I know that's a thought of it, but.
May I ask a question?
I like smooth stuff.
Just from a historical perspective, what have we done in the past? Have they been, have, has the superintendent been in the meetings in the past?
Yes.
Has the CFO been in meetings in the past?
Yes.
Not in executive session, but the CEO has been in bargaining sessions, not with us.
What about way back before Dr. before Dr. Legutco?
No, he didn't come to executive session, not, not since I've been on the board.
What about you, Carol?
Oh, God, no.
Okay, so here's, here's my contention.
Not in executive session, no.
If a union representative is meeting with Mr. Davis or Dr. Legutco, regardless of them being on the team, I, isn't it, I mean, during, while bargaining is ongoing, those topics should be off the table to discuss anyway, right?
My understanding is that we can speak to factual information that was presented at the table during bargaining, anything that goes beyond the factual information that was articulated may be, could very well be in violation.
I just feel like you're walking a tight line.
Yeah, and from, from my side of it, I don't aspire to put this district in a situation where, you know, that we feel that we're doing something unethical and unprofessional, but to Ms. Stutter's point, I do believe that there could be conversations that could, that could be beneficial to it.
That's, that's where I'm going, because my only goal is for us to have smooth negotiations and kit and not wind up at impasse or whatever, you don't want to live through impasse.
Or with any legal ramifications, they've done it.
Well, there's no, there's nothing keeping either of you from having a conversation with a person as long as it's not about things pertaining to bargaining, which that was just.
There is something wrong, there is something wrong with essentially what comes down to private bargaining.
Right.
So, this is not unusual, a couple of mayors ago in the city of Jacksonville, the mayor was dinged, if you will, in having these private conversations with an influential person, okay, and the guidance is, and typically is, collective bargaining negotiations are totally public, okay? And it makes sense, I'd certainly feel much more comfortable to limit conversations about collective bargaining to the public collective bargaining session. What I absolutely don't want, I want to make very, very clear, is that regardless of whether the influential person is a member of the employees committee, the bargaining committee.
Now, who are you talking about now, them or the other person?
No, the, the, the union, okay, regardless, if this person is, is on the bargaining committee of the employee, i.e. the union.
They're not.
Okay, there have been plenty of cases where courts have found, well, you may not have been a committee member, but really what you ended up doing was you bargained privately. That is wrong, that's a violation of 447.
I think, like you said, it's walking a tight line, I just wanted to throw it out and give you things to talk.
Well, and I, I think that really it would be conversations with Dr. Legutco, because Mr. Davis has already been participating with us in our executive sessions, he knows, he's privy to our conversations, he.
And he's not going to reveal that to anybody.
Right, and, and we, and we, we know already, you know, that he has pretty frequent conversations with influential people in both of our bargaining units, so I really think it would be Dr. Legutco, and I have the utmost confidence in her that she's going to represent us, and, and only stick to those facts, I'm comfortable with it, I understand what you're saying, and I understand, it would be really because we have recognized that ex officio title that no one else ever really has, so.
You know, the law makes it, the law makes it sufficiently difficult to do any, any bargaining outside of the public, okay?
Always the law was a little more.
Well, apparently other districts are doing it this way. Do you know how many districts have their superintendent and CFO on their bargaining teams? Would you spoke with Andrea, did she give you any indication of how many?
No, I didn't, I didn't ask.
Yeah.
I think that it is most, yeah, it is unusual to have a superintendent who completely delegates responsibility to another, you know, group of folks.
Well, and the right name is, is not, it's basically to offer protection for these two.
So what's everybody comfortable with?
I mean, I feel wrong, you have a majority.
I feel, I feel comfortable with putting them on and trusting their professional standards and talking with outsiders as well, I mean, we've all been approached by questions, and I've, you know, dodged, I mean, you tactfully dodge them, you tactfully dodge them, and just, and I think they're pretty, pretty good at it as well.
Well, I think it's fair to just request that whoever is approaching you, respect the integrity of bargaining or what it's meant to be, so, and that's, that's how I would, that's how I would confront it, and.
We gotta speak to this guy.
I just wanted to throw it out.
I appreciate it, that's, you're more.
Sorry, I can't speak to you. I can't speak to Macaulay.
Well, we've been so intent on having her in here and making certain that everything is legally appropriate, we weren't looking at the other side, but I'm glad you're.
Either way, I just wanted to go about the person, because, you know, I always think, what if?
And I do think it's important to have Susan there, even though I'm the one that brought up the issue of it, I think you go about it the right way, but we certainly do need to have, and I actually think going to the collective bargaining sessions and really present the money in the beginning, and then maybe follow up again or something, I don't know, is, is a good thing, show, you know, where we're at and everything, instead of, you know, them just hearing it from Mr. Rosky.
I just want to, we pretend.
Is there any further discussion before we move on and vote on it? All right, I have a motion by Mrs. Polo, a second by Ms. Condon, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Ms. Bush, are we supposed to be voting on here, because it looks like a different screen to me today?
Well.
I don't have a voting screen like Mrs. Stutter does. I don't.
Mine's not coming out to the.
I do.
I have the same as.
And let me vote.
I have a voting screen.
Well, I have.
Everybody.
Ever and.
I vote for Comptera.
Put me down as a yes.
My vote.
It's everything.
I voted.
For what?
I don't have the right. We're not going to play games, we're going to move on, so our next item is, our next item is the 2017-18 Assessment Calendar. I will entertain a motion.
Number three.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stutter, a second by Ms. Condon, any discussion on the assessment calendar?
I, I still would like, can you talk a little bit more, maybe Dr. McCully, Mr. McCully will tell us about the, I'm still not completely comfortable with that we're ready, and, and I'll give you an example, right, and it's personal, and it's not, I'm only using my child as an example because he's one of sort of five thousand, but the, he, he's doing achieve in his English class, they have to go to a lab to do it, to, they're only, because we had a shortened with the hurricane, we had shortened first grading period, there were only nine assignments graded in the whole class.
Right.
At ninth, this is ninth grade honors English, two of those assignments were achieve assignments, he only finished half of them, did not have the opportunity to finish both of them, so he got a fifty on both of them, and ended up with an eighty-nine B for the term in the class. That's my concern, is that, and I'm, and I'm not saying, hey, we had, we had to come to Jesus at home about how to go after school, but, but my, but my concern is, are we hurting our kids by not being completely ready? And I know y'all talked, talked about the six computers, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so, A, it's unfortunate that, that instructor evaluated a kid when they didn't finish the product, they didn't finish an assignment within the product, if they didn't give them sufficient time within the class. The other thing is, is these products are be, are, are accessible to kids before, during, after school, and at home, so they can interact with them as often in the accessibility they have within their neighborhood or community and their house. So, if they don't finish something, we should be encouraging them to continue that with before, during, after school.
Okay, so they can log in from a different.
Yes, I, yes, they're logged in, stays the same, the reason I know that is because I had Caitlin, sixth grader, my daughter, and then her friend were over at the house on Monday evening, and we had two, two computers, they were, they were working on civics, and they transitioned to pull in some, some articles they were assigned in achieve, and they were working on it in the evening, which is beautiful, I started a program, do you like it? Yeah, yeah, I got kids in neighborhood, and they ring my doorbell, hey, their superintendent canceled school, do you like achieve? So, it's unfortunate, so he shouldn't have suffered half of that at all.
Okay, no, but that's good, so we'll have another, another conversation, but I think that's.
The Keystone is on me, Jeremy Bunkley and Macaulay have been ready to go to Keystone to drop off computers in the last week, me being out and having taken out at the end of last week, I didn't get a chance to go there, we are now scheduled to try to go beginning of next week and release it, and the reason we haven't done it is because we want to highlight some work in communications and invite you as well to talk about what we're doing through, through the media about how we're moving sixty-two hundred Chromebooks, how we're having, moving to wireless updates to all of our schools and becoming more accessible, so they're ready to go, the hold's on me, but we'll get.
But we are ready, from a technology standpoint, we all feel comfortable, that was what I wanted to know.
I can tell you right now is that over ninety-five to ninety-seven percent have completed all the baseline assessments.
Yeah, in terms of students also, to the chair, I think Ms. Condon makes a good point, and a good concern, have we finished the, the Wi-Fi project?
Not yet, we have, I think, four or five more schools.
And can you, Nathan, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, can, can you explain kind of what we have done with that project?
So, with the, the access points that came in, we have been putting an access point in every classroom at every school, I would say we're eighty-five to maybe ninety percent complete on them, we actually just knocked out, yesterday was Montclair Elementary and Orange Park Elementary, I don't remember the schedule.
No, it's okay, no worries, that's awesome.
And then, like you said, we're, we're waiting on the go for Keystones, we've been ready to pounce, knock it out, get this done, and move on to the next one, but all the Chromebooks have been out and delivered from that sixty-two hundred order.
This, this team has done unbelievable work in a short period of time.
They're working, they're working nine, ten o'clock at night.
You know, we talk about accessibility with wireless and, and computers, the, you know, the plan was twenty-twenty completion, and these guys did it in months, so my hat's off to you and your team.
What's our ratio tablet to student?
We have to go and look, it varies by school, we have, you know, as you know, some of our concept schools that did one-to-one, and we're trying to get it down where it's, it's under one to three per school, we have ways to go with that.
We're pretty close to one to three, we will be at the end of this year.
In this year, next year brings on the part where we're down to the one to the twos, and some are one to one, so it's an aggressive plan that we know that probably next year we're closer to that one-to-one than we ever have been.
And, and just for the board's benefit, I think Ms. Galz has the question also.
Ms. Galz, valid.
When we say one-to-one, we're not talking a computer in every student's hand, what we're saying is access to devices during the school day for instruction and interaction for every kid, so when they need to be engaged in something, they can be, it'd be awesome to have one in everybody's hand, but that, sometimes that makes sense.
From a lot, from planning purpose, that almost doesn't make sense, so.
Instructionally.
We will be very, very.
And, and I sent an email last night.
A long email.
It was a long email, but some things weigh on my heart, and, and I'm sorry if they're extensive and lengthy, but it spoke to that very point of the fact of, hey, you know what, this is the implementation year, transition as you need to, implement as you need to, no one's going to be big brother, and reap the benefits of it.
And I already got emails from teachers who read it last night, and were very happy with some of what they liked, I mean.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Certain points that they were very concerned about, so, thank you.
I appreciate that as well, my concern, though, is kind of in line with what Betsy was talking about, that what's the penalty to students if this doesn't, it is an implementation year, what kind of weight are we putting on these assessments when it comes to kids' grades?
Yeah, at, at the end of the day, the diagnostics aren't, aren't, are not assessments that are to be graded, it's only to inform the instructional process, now, if someone, if someone is assigning articles and tasks, such as at the secondary level, which is very common, because it does, if I'm reading about the Civil War, then I can go and I can assign articles that are attached to that to achieve, because they're very, they're high, rich in complexity, and it gives them a formulated number of questions, a scaffold every, every question for the learner, then they may give some value of accountability to that to make sure that they're a proven comprehension, but it shouldn't be relevant to how much time they have on task, every learner is different, it shouldn't be, hey, you have this, you got to get it done, this, we got twenty minutes in lab, you got twenty minutes to get this assignment done, no one should be extending that type of mentality to kids, everyone learns at their own pace, if they don't get it done within that completion of the time, which we believe is sufficient time, then they should either roll over or it should be extended in the evening.
Homework, and, and that's, so that leads me to my next thing, we've had this conversation as well, but I really think a good advert, advertising campaign would help, from the teacher aspect and from the parent aspect of, you know, just a PR.
Right.
The more PR of saying, this is not, we're, we're not testing your kid every, this truly is diagnostic to, to instruction, and we, we have those definitions now on our calendar, and I like that a lot, I think really to communicate, to say, as a, as a district, if you have this, it needs to be homework, we need, it needs to be part of your, and if you don't have access at home, see your principal or whatever, and then we can deal with that on a case by case basis.
We can build an extended time, whether, I mean, we, we got so many Chrome devices now that if they feel that they want to have interaction before school or during a. now that they feel that they want to have interaction before school, or during, during elective class, or they may have time that a teacher approves, or maybe during lunch, or whether an aide, whatever it may be, or they're waiting for someone to pick them up, let's use it and rock and roll on them.
Okay, that would be.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, that's a fair, there you go.
Communicate it with the code.
Are achieve and iReady accessible on the OnePlay app?
Who would have asked that question?
Say that again.
Are achieve and iReady accessible from the OnePlay app?
I believe they are.
I, I want to say yes, but I'm not.
I'll tell you.
So, I think how they get to it is going, have you ever gone through the staff portal?
Yes, the portal's accessibility.
So, the kids can go in through the student portal.
Yeah, the student portal, I do know that they're there and accessible. I just got to figure out if it's accessible for the app.
I don't, no, I don't know that they'll work like on a phone. I mean, they're pretty hesitant, quite right.
I see Madison doing it.
I think part of, really, some of the angst is just helping families get familiar with it. Instead of more accessibility, you can get better.
Sure.
And I think also consistent messaging across the district to teachers about, please don't put any more weight on this exam than what we're intend to use it for.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I think part of the angst that parents feel, and students too, is it's not just about assessment so much as it is about high stakes assessment.
Right.
And so, if we're making it clear that this is not about that, this is informative, and it's part of making sure your child gets the best they can out of this program, I think that would be a useful message.
I agree.
And I think it is important that we make sure that that's what's being implemented in the classroom.
And that involves the communication to the teachers.
Exactly.
And, and I know that we, we trust the administration to filter down to the teachers, but if there's more, like what you sent last night, or yesterday, whenever you sent it, to really specifically say, I mean, there were old parts of that that said, you know, this is not, this should be, and that's, that's, that really relieves some pressure on the teachers, because the teachers inherently want to make this successful. They want, they want this to work.
Coming to work, I probably had twenty emails that talked about, thank you, this is working, and L O Is also, I mean, it's just, they just want to find time, and they just got to have time to interact with it. So, it's just, time will, we will get better. And this, understand this as an organization, this is the worst we will ever be using this. We are going to get better every single day. And once we get over this part of, and we get better as a district supporting teachers and parents and students, we will see the benefit of it.
And I know you can't answer this because things change in a year, but there's, there's part of me that wants to say, no new initiative next year.
Nothing, I have, I have nothing.
Let this roll for a year, let us be able to, let the teachers and the students be able to absorb it and understand it.
Right, and as a leader of the organization, you know, I mean, we have science adoption coming up, that's the only kind of initiative that we, we forecast, that we will have to put a number of professional programs. Right now, I don't forecast anything changing next year, other than us just diving deeper into our work and what the resources that we have.
That would be, that would be, that would be a unique year for this county.
Yep, so.
Is there any further discussion?
Just one more point that I wanted to talk about, but the number of minutes designated to assessment, especially, I know it's different when it's the state mandated, but as far as what we are requiring, just clarity, that is what's allowed, it's not what's required, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Because I know the state requires you to sit.
Yeah.
And for that whole, you know.
Yes, ma'am, we just put a window on it, and, and if it's a ninety-minute window and they get done in forty-five minutes, then we tip our hats and we move forward. Most of the, most of this, and to be honest with you, iReady and achieve will not be done at whole group scale. It will be done once we have the devices in the school, it's just going to be part of the instructional rotation. So, when they, when this kid goes to rotations, we'll be working on it, and it may take two days in their twenty-minute rotation to finish it. So, it's not timeout, we're testing, we're blocking the whole school off.
That's huge.
Yeah, I mean, that's, this is one of the reasons, because it's just cyclical in the instructional process. It's not, oh, we're going to shut the school down, we're going to test.
Because I think that was what the concern that when I had the teachers.
That's the stigma of the testing pass.
Yeah, the teachers that contacted me that were talking about kids being pulled out of classes, that's more for the standard assessments.
Right. Now, you could, you were right originally when you said that we may not be ready. Now, in the baseline, there could have been some, hey, let's go to the lab and get it done. But once we get the Chromebooks in hands, then that rotation takes place now, we're getting, I mean, we're getting to a better spot where that is just going to be rotations, you know? So, what we did on this was eliminated the mid-years for iReady and K3 and mathematics A, K8. Teachers can use it if they want to use it, which would be great to use it for a form, that's on them, because they have time and when they want to use it, there's no window. We removed that, and then we removed the ELA six through ten, because we have an achieve mid-year, it gives us some of the same information. And if teachers continue, they're working hard to teach standards, it's all on this to sell this. The only thing, though, is that they wanted to see the SAT ten in grades one and two. That's per the CAS committee. So, you had, we eliminated, we had to add more back on K one and two. We had it down three sixty, but the CAS committee, they wanted that to be an option as well. So, it's, you know, what they want. Originally, they were, and we met at the day, they were okay with what was presented, but I just went into the CAS meeting a minute ago, and they were talking about adding something else, and I'm going, oh, no, don't do it. Don't do it, don't do it. I said, you should have taken what I had the first, you're adding on what, on top of what I had, but, but you know what, if that's what they feel they want to have for an assessment, then, then we will, I want to accommodate teachers to have access.
I know at the beginning of the year, when we first adopted, when we first implemented the social studies adoption.
Yes, ma'am.
There was the problem of not having enough Chromebooks, not having enough computers.
True.
So, we did, there were a number of junior highs and high schools that had the sort of, the shutdown. And, okay, we have to go test and come back, because I was getting that response. And with your concern about the K through two, I called some of the kindergarten teachers that I know at different schools, and it was interesting, because they do implement it differently.
Yeah.
And some said, you know what, we got it done, it was this, it was that, but then they also shared with me, you know, there's, there's continuous assessment, obviously, with kindergarten. I mean, and they just came up with their first quarter report card, and sitting with a kindergartner and making certain that they know counting, that they know their numbers up through ten, that they know their colors, that they know, they have to assess them for each of those as well. And it's just time-consuming, but they do it. And, and it's amazing, the classroom management, but they also know how they use parents that come in and help. And so, I, I felt better about it after talking with some of the teachers and saying, this is reality. And, and truly, I mean, I shared with them that forty-five minute business about, you must have this, back off a little bit on that, and it's a lot easier, so.